Good evening to everyone, and we're just really glad to have seen we have some extra people up tonight, which we you always welcome to our meetings tonight. At this time, we'll call on Travis Beard to lead us in the invocation, and afterwards, we will have the pledge led by Lynn Bryan.
Please stand. Lord, we thank you for this day that you've given us, best that we have used it to honor your name. We pray that you would just watch over us during our meeting tonight, that we would honor you with our actions, and that we would protect the interests of the city. Forgive us, forgive us, Lord, of our failures, and help those who are weak, in Christ's name, amen.
Let's face the flag, salute, flag, flagrant.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now like to call the meeting to order, and we'll call on our Vice President, Janice Esson, to make a motion to confirm or amend the agenda and agenda order.
Thank you. I would like to make an amendment to the agenda and the agenda order to add item number 25 in the matter of a change order for Veterans Park Playground.
Second.
Moved and property second that we would confirm and amend the agenda and agenda order, any questions? All in favor? Oppose or nay? We will now go to proclamations, recognitions, and reports. Agenda, are there any proclamations tonight?
There is, Ms. Nettie, and because of my crackling voice, I'm going to ask Kelly Knight to come up and read the proclamation for National Public Works Week.
Proclamation, whereas public work service provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of and understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the effective operation of the public work system and programs such as beautification, drainage, streets and highways, public buildings, and solid waste collections, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of the citizens of Tupelo greatly depend on these facilities and services, whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of the public work staff, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff the City of Tupelo's Public Works Department is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform.
Now therefore, be it proclaimed, I, Todd Jordan, Mayor of the City of Tupelo, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th through 24, 24, 2025 as National Public Works Week in Tupelo, Mississippi.
Are there any boy or girl scouts present tonight? I believe we have any. Employee recognition, our public recognition, and we start with our chat.
So just in light of what was just said, I do want to commend Kelly Knight. I know this is, he's quote new on the job, but he's really not new. He's a very experienced individual, and I would like to sing his praises because he makes my job much easier. So thank you for what you do in all the Public Works Department.
Okay, Janet.
I don't have anything.
Rosie.
I would like to thank Kelly as well for always showing up when I call him. I also want to thank the people who supported me, and I want to thank God that the race is over for me. Thanks for all of that.
Okay, Lynn.
You got it.
Travis.
Yes, I'll just give a shout out to Kelly as well, also to Tupelo High School. I think yesterday they were tennis state champs, both boys and girls, so good for them. It's been several years since we were state champs in tennis, so shout out to Tupelo High School.
Okay, there's several things that I want to mention. We had a lot of things going on this weekend. The supervisors, Black Caucus Meeting was here early in Tupelo for four days, and they had an excellent turnout, and they really bragged about our city and how prosperous it was, and so we need to really be appreciative of all the things that are being done in our city. I would also like to mention that the Link Center received an outstanding grant to the to help with some renovations and upgrade another black room, a black box there at the Link Center, and they received this grant from the, what was the name of the company?
T-Mobile.
T-Mobile, yeah, T-Mobile, and it's really going to add to the interior of that building where they're doing all kinds of things. It's called the Link Center, and that's just what it does, reaches out to people in the community, cultural and otherwise. So we'd like to thank, thank all the people who contribute to the city. We've had a lot of other activities here, an outstanding concert on Saturday night in a meet, almost a sellout of tennis at that, at the Coliseum, so I'd just like to praise and thanks for all that we have going in the city of Tupelo. Mayors report.
Yeah, just a couple of things. Had a great event Friday night, Bud and Burgers downtown, congratulations Lucia, and we want to meet again before our opening of the depot. It's May the 2nd, 5:30. Same weekend as Blue Sway Cruise, there'll be over a thousand cars here for that, so it's a big weekend for us, and a big economic weekend, so that's all.
Thank you so much. We'll now close the regular meeting, open public agenda, public agenda hearings in the matter of public hearings for demolition. Anyone here to speak on that issue? Item two in the matter of public hearing for law enforcement, anyone present to speak on that issue? We'll now go to appeals. Are there any appeals? There are none. Citizen hearings, none.
Yeah, we got several.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You got several, yeah.
Sheet, I flipped the page. We have several people that speak on citizen hearings, and I believe we got about seven or eight people, and I would like for you to, I'm going to call their names because they're in this order. Steven Kuhn, and each one of these persons coming forward will speak, give their names and speak for five minutes. After that, we'll let you know if your time is up.
My name's Steven Kuhn. I currently serve as the Presley Heights Neighborhood Association President. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. With the limited opportunities remaining, I'd like to, number one, thank Buddy Palmer for his 12 years of service to the City of Tupelo. He's been a great steward for us. While I'm certain that all of you have heard about one of my two issues from Mr. Palmer and Mr. Farnett over the last year or so, I find that it can help to hear from other perspectives as well. So I've given you a hand out there with several pictures. So the first part has to do with Chandler Park. It's a neighborhood park on South Canal Street that needs some attention. So there in my first picture, it shows a fine frame for swings, and there's no swings hanging. You know, this park is relatively small, but it is a neighborhood park. It would be good to have, you know, some of the things for the, for the neighborhood kids to, to get out and play on. But then the mat surface underneath it is terribly uneven, it's gapped, and it just shows the years of wear that it's got on it. Then over to the side there, on the next page, there's the, the plastic barrier around the playground equipment. There's several of the large spikes that are coming up out of the ground by a couple inches, you know, so if kids trip on that, they can get hurt, and it could just use some attention. And then I actually had one of the neighbors there complain about how close that is in proximity to the property line. He said that he has zero privacy in his backyard. And I understand that we can't necessarily move it, but I don't know what the, what the protocol would be in the future when, when items are replaced, or, you know, new parks are built, you know. I feel like property lines need to be considered. The more widely known issue is at Veterans Memorial Park. We want to ask about getting Wi-Fi throughout the Veterans Memorial Park, which would then allow for parking wreck to place cameras in the park. This will allow law enforcement the ability to have video evidence of criminal activity and vandalism. The presence, the presence of cameras will also serve as a deterrent. Large crowds of young adults will often gather at the Vietnam Veterans Wall parking lot on Friday and Saturday nights, and as they're leaving, typically well past the 10:00 PM closure, they'll do burnouts along, and their exhaust are exceedingly loud on the vehicles. This causes great anguish amongst the neighbors. And I've got several pictures below. This first picture here, it shows some of the marks coming terribly close to one of the flagpoles. You know, they couldn't have been more than a foot off that flagpole when they went by it. And then the next four pictures is just a continuation of different areas throughout the park in which you see this. You know, I understand the, the police department, you know, they can't serve as private security for the park or anything of that nature, but I know the neighborhood is aggravated with the situation. You know, they, they'd like something to happen. So I was asked to come up and make this presentation to you. So I appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next person, Jana Crowe. She said, please state your name and.
She has a migraine, she won't be speaking.
All right, so you're taking her place.
No, ma'am, I was told I couldn't read for her.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Nancy Mc, Lee McDade.
Ms. Nettie, I think that we were going, gonna, before we start, I think all of these are on the same issue, if we can kind of brief up what the, the timeline and everything on that is before, before the citizens' hearing, so that we, we can do that.
All right, okay.
I think they told me before the meeting that she can email her what she was going to say to y'all, and it would be put in the minutes.
So you're going to speak for two people?
I was told I could not.
Okay, well, if you could go ahead and speak, representing yourself, just.
The attorney wants to speak first.
Oh, okay.
The attorney's going to speak first.
Okay.
So Nancy, if you, it's going to take probably five minutes, so if you want to sit down, come back up, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, the next person is.
No, 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 Ben going to speak.
Supposed to be speaking, Ben, okay.
And this is kind of not irregular, but it's not something that we often do, but it will, may save the council some time in thinking about this, this issue. The, you will hear some about a, a convenience store being built out in West Tupelo. Now, the property that that is built on has been zoned commercial since 1994, and that it was called heavy commercial back then, and it extends about 900 or so feet from Cooley Road. It extended back then. In 2013, the, we, we started calling it mixed-use commercial corridor, but it was the same distance from Cooley Road. A convenience store is a use by right in that zone. It's not a compatible use, it's not a flexible use, and it is not prohibited there. It is a use by right. Therefore, we will hear some about why didn't folks get notice, and, and that, there's no notice on a use by right. They have, you look it up, if it sits there, they then have to go to the development code as to getting a site plan or a, for the building or the, the use that they're having there, and there are no appeals from a use by right. Now, there could be some discretionary thing on the site plan that could, could stand an appeal, and when it's not discretionary, I think that we remember the Flowerdale Commons Matter. If it's not discretionary, and they check all the blocks, then we have to go with that. There are two separate subdivisions side by side out there. There is a club side, commercial subdivision. It was platted and filed October 31st, 20,000, or 2022. There is a residential club side subdivision, same time. There are separate restrictive covenants out there. All of the commercial lots are within the commercial zone, and after that, the developer, Clubside, sold to a Mr. Said Obad in August of 2023, three lots for over $400,000. The deed that was given to him acknowledged that he was building a, a convenience store, but required it to be constructed with a neighborhood style, and with the development plans not only approved by the city, but by the developer. In August, in June of 2024, some half a year later, or a little, almost a year later, the developer filed a petition in Chancery Court to alter that plat and combine three lots that he had sold to Mr. Obad. The, he filed under a 1946 statute that most of us attorneys have been using way longer than, than I've been practicing, to alter a plat that had been filed, either to amend it, change it in some way, or to vacate it. That's a right that property owners have to change what a subdivision plat looks like. They are required to give notice to, to those adversely affected or directly interested therein. That doesn't mean everybody that rides down the road, that goes by there, it means other owners in that subdivision, or if there is a phased subdivision, it means that anything that might impact the other phase of that subdivision. That was filed with the Chancery Court about the same time. The, some site plans for that were filed upstairs in Development Services and subject to review by Public Works, Water and Light, Development Services, the, the building folks in Development Services, and the, and of course, planners up there verifying that it was indeed a, a, a use by right in a commercial subdivision. The, we got notice about a month after the July the, or on July the 8th, about a month after they filed the plat amendment, and we looked at it in terms of, okay, it's zoned that way, what can we do with the site plan to make sure that it is cohesive? We looked at buffer requirements, we looked at the location of a sewer line that was in the area, and we looked at the road entrances off Jackson Extended. On the buffer, it was not the westernmost lot. It did not touch the residential subdivision. That, that property did not. Therefore, the buffer requirement goes on the three lots that abut the residential subdivision, and while there were landscaping requirements, as any lot would have, they did not have have a greater buffer requirement there. The location of the sewer, because of the combining of the lots, would have made it from an engineering standpoint more costly and, and not necessarily impossible, but it would, because of the, the little, the slope of the hill going down, would not have served that as well as allowing it where they were asking to move that sewer. Now, this is not zoning, this is the site plan and those type things that they have to show on the site plan. And the roads off entrances, or the road entrances off Jackson Extended, I think Kelly, if he's still here, and Dennis, there were a good bit of discussion on that, and that was resolved, I believe, to, to y'all's satisfaction under the city's street specification guidelines. So it, as, as it moved along, and Tanner can verify that, that every requirement of the site plan was met. Now, the Chancery Court Judge approved the, the alteration of the plat on January the 16th of 2025. The site plan was subsequently approved by the city, and a building permit issued, and I believe they started construction within the last week or so. The, what we're looking at is discretionary versus ministerial acts by the city, and discretionary acts are something that this body, or the, the code person, or the department head that makes that decision, might have a little leeway in that. Ministerial acts, on the other hand, is if you check all the blocks, we're violating the law to deprive someone of building permit or to do things of that nature. The purpose of our zoning map and our development code is so that everybody that owns property in the city limits of Tupelo knows what their rights are on their property, where they can build, and how they have to go about it, depending on where that zoning map is, and the rules of developing a piece of property. If we go against our own development code or our zoning map, then we're being, either, we're either violating statute, we're violating our own ordinance, or we're arbitrary, which is, I like you, but I don't like that person, I'm going to keep them from building something, or I'm going to let them build something, or capricious, which is like, I was in Chancery Court one time, and, and a coin flip decided the custody of, of a child. That's capricious. What we, what we do here, it's not because somebody's going to sue us for it, it's because, you know, that's, it's against the law to, to act in that manner. I can't do it, you know, as much as I would, would hate for a convenience store where I bought a house in a, a separate residential subdivision right next to a commercial subdivision. I wouldn't like that, but that's my opinion, and that, that's, we had no legal right to oppose this Chancery Court suit to alter the, the plat. I'm sworn to y'all to make sure y'all don't do that, and give you advice on what is legal and not legal. And I'm also sworn to the court and the other people before the court not to just come up with frivolous or delay tactics or things of that nature, when it's obvious that we don't have a legal right to interfere with that fellow's exercise of his rights on his property. And so that's, that's where we are. We didn't sell the lot. We did zone it back in 1994 and didn't change it, you know, other than the name of the commercial zone. It's been that way for a long time. They could have built a convenience store out there over the last 30 years, and he could have built a convenience store if he didn't combine these lots. So it, it's not a whole lot we can do, but I understand that there is a great deal of concern, and, and probably some warranted, but it's not because the city did not take a great effort to make sure that this was a legal proposition. That's all I have, Ms. Nettie.
Okay, so you want me, if possible, to ask them to brief the presentation down, unless.
Yes, if they, if they can, the citizens have requested to have their five minutes, and.
Okay, okay, so we'll go back to Nancy McDade. You can come forward and state your name and speak five minutes, no more.
Hi, I'm Nancy Lee. Good evening. On March the 3rd, Mayor Jordan asked us at the Tupelo Furniture Market a question, and I'd like to ask all of y'all. Raise your hand if you want your property values to go up. Raise your hand if you would like your property values to go up.
Oh, yeah.
Well, then my question to each of you, and especially those in attendance that evening, Ms. Gaston, Mr. Beard, Mr. Mims, Mr. Bryan, Mayor Jordan, Mr. Nolan, who's part of the city, why did no one say that night that the city was very happy that Mayor Jordan's neighbor was putting in a gas station just right across the street from the furniture market? Can Mayor Jordan or the council tell us how this gas station raises the property value when we already have 40-plus gas pumps within a two-mile radius, not counting the van that is being currently built? And why was there not a sign that said, out there that said, "Future Home of Bravo Travel Center"? How does this comply with the city's code of a stable transition? From an upscale coffee shop that hosts birthday parties and graduation parties to $800,000 homes, how is this gas station a stable transition? And that's part of the city's code. Will there be a turn lane for this gas station, and just for this gas station, and who is paying for it? If there's no turning lane, how does it help with the traffic flow? And how does it help with the property values for Charleston Gardens, Oak Meadows, St. Andrews, Wendover, Sunningdale, to name a few? Or is all that traffic to be diverted to Butler around the orchard? What are the hours of this current store? Will there be lights on all the time? Is there a light study done? How, and will that, will, will the, will the city be, will another, will they be able to sell medical marijuana? Will they be able, be able to build a building beside that and sell medical marijuana? Will there be another liquor store added there? Was there a traffic study done there? And how about the trash that this store will generate? How does that affect our property values if we're trying to sell our home and there's trash along the side of the road? Does Mayor Jordan and the council think that if we, if you spent $800,000 for a home, that a gas station would soon be in your front yard? How can Mayor Jordan and the council and the development services explain to me how this is a stable transition in property value? Why did this project begin to break ground the day after the election? And that's when we, all the neighborhood, found out about it. Why, when the council, when our council person was called, they said they didn't know anything about the gas station? My question is, if the council who represents us didn't know, is this fair to the people in all the neighborhoods? What will be put in next after the gas station if this continues? How is putting this gas station creating a stable transition? Will this raise or lower the bar of the, the stable transition? The expectation of the mayor and the council is that, that y'all are elected and supposed to represent us. It is, is it fair representation of, of the community to find out the day they break ground of an undesired gas station? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, the next person, John Heinz.
My name is John Heinz. I live at Oak Meadows Subdivision. Couple of weeks ago, we were leaving Oak Meadows, we turned right onto West Jackson Extended, and then noticed that the traffic was backed up more than normal. As we proceeded, I noticed someone was out in the road directing traffic as we got closer, and could tell some dirt working was being done on part of the club side, which was wayed up bigger than previously done. Came home later and glanced down at my phone, and the message board for the neighborhood was blowing up. Someone actually put on there that we were getting a new convenience store and a gas station, and then it caught fire. Bottom line is that we knew this was zoned commercial, and really had no problems with it due to the billboards and the advertising that was done for the. and really had no problems with it due to the billboards and the advertising that was done for the club site. With these drawings, we're actually excited we were gonna get some small businesses in the area, maybe some boutiques, maybe even an ice cream shop, or maybe even another chicken restaurant. Just did not expect a convenience store and gas station. There's nothing that we could do, just like Mr. Logan said, there's nothing that we can do about this now. However, my concern is the additional traffic this will cause. Oak Meadows Subdivision, which has over a hundred and sixty-five homes in it, sits almost directly at the end of Jackson Extended. To the right is Tupelo Country Club with six-hundred to seven-hundred members, St. Andrews Subdivision, and then Wendover and Sunningdale. Right around the corner, we have a new subdivision, Wellstone. All this was basically one way in and one way out. On Purnell Road, either West Jackson Extended or go down to Butler. On the other side of Oak Meadows, you have Charleston Gardens, Countrywood Cove, and arguably the biggest subdivision in Tupelo, Lake Circle, and Lakeville. Just past them, you have Autumn Hills. And again, just like the other side, you basically have one way out and one way in. Most folks who need to turn left on Cooley, go to West Jackson, catch the light. Again, my opinion, this intersection at Cooley and West Jackson is already one of the most dangerous intersections in the city. And now with this new addition, I'm afraid it will become the most dangerous. We at Oak Meadows will continue to fight traffic. We will complain about traffic. We will mumble about it. But we will put up with it due to the fact that it's been like this for a long time, and there's little hope for this to change. While we will continue to have these traffic problems, I have to say I really feel for those folks who own homes in the club site. They wake up one morning feeling great. They look out their front window, and they have a new addition to their neighborhood, a convenience and gas station, and all the things that go along with it. Now, these are six-hundred to eight-hundred-thousand-dollar homes, a huge investment. I'm sorry, I just can't imagine. I personally talked to Chad, our councilman, a couple of times about this. And again, he mentioned that he and the council did not know about this until it was a done deal. Said someone from the third floor took care of this, and they didn't get any information on any construction in their wards. During the course of our conversation, he mentioned the third floor many times. In closing, I would recommend, I have a recommendation for the council. This week or next week, I would stop by the local donut shop, 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 and get some donuts and go knock on that third floor door and ask about my ward and is there any new construction that is going on that will be going on in the future in my ward? Then, any new construction going on in the city as a whole that might affect my ward or the citizens of Tupelo. Be proactive. As you can see, sometimes not knowing is not a very good excuse. Thank you for allowing me to speak, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Heinz. The next person, Judy Jones. If you could state your name, and you have five minutes.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. My name is Judy Jones. And after hearing what Attorney Ben Logan said, I've had to cross out most of my talk, so I'll be brief. I too live in Oak Meadows Subdivision. My husband and I chose to move to Tupelo in two thousand seven because it had everything we wanted in a small but growing city. We have been very happy here, but last week, we were shocked to learn that a gas station was being built in the club side area. We knew there was commercial-y's owned lots, but we assumed the new commercial stores would be retail like V.M. Cleveland built and filled. West Tupelo has wanted more retail in our area for many years, even before we moved here. We are very happy with the stores that chose to come to our area, especially Brooks Grocery, which also sells gasoline. Having worked with attorneys in the private sector and two federal judges all of my career, I know how to check how cases tracked. And I defer back to Mr. Logan. I went and got a copy of the petition, and they have crossed their Ts and dotted their Is. But I just, I just don't understand how this can legally happen, allegedly without my councilman knowing and the remaining council persons knowing of it ahead of time. When I was first told about this last week, I immediately called my councilman, also Chad Mims, and was informed that he knew nothing about the proposed gas station being built at curb, club side recently, until recently. This may be a legal and reasonable and customary way to do business, but it just sort of stinks to me. I think we ought to start changing the law to give y'all more legal say. I know I could probably file an injunction to try and stop any curb placement on Jackson Extended, but that would cost money, and I'm sure those involved have more to fight with than I do. Doing so would also not help Brooks Grocery or any of those businesses with increased congested traffic, not intended for any of them making people enter from the Cooley Road entrance to go to the service station. I'm very worried about the impending additional traffic problem from Purnell to West Jackson Extended to Cooley Road, which is traveled by citizens from many neighborhoods, including teenagers, elderly, and even young children. I also do not look forward to what some gasoline stations include, like selling vape materials. I just feel my property values going down every minute, but I'm more concerned with the danger to life of our citizens with what will be an explosion of unwanted traffic. I spoke with Mr. Brooks Davis today, and he too wonders why and if placement of this service station at this location is warranted. Again, I understand the law, having worked for attorneys for fifteen years in the private sector and then two federal U.S. magistrate judges for twenty-four years. And I know, I mean, he knows what he's saying, but it still stinks to us, of us who have no say. And we would expect y'all representing us to have more say. I thank you for listening to me, and I hope you, as our representatives, will pause to think and even discuss how this can happen to this extent without your knowledge. I would entertain any responses you may have to this problem. And I hope Mr. Logan can start figuring out how we can come up with some law changes to make it more conducive to y'all's interaction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. At this time, Rob Chambers can come forward. State your name, and you have five minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Mr. Mayor, thank you. Council, thank you so much for, that we have this privilege here to be able to have direct citizen engagement. So, thank you very much for that. I know the city attorney has already kind of given a little bit of a thumbnail sketch of kind of the background on this, but I'd like to kind of go back over that just again. So, back on June sixth of last year, June sixth, two thousand twenty-four, a petition was filed with the Chancery Court of Lee County. And that was filed by, or the petitioner was Club Site LLC, and the manager of Club Site LLC is Tommy Morgan. And then it also lists other people that are defendants, or, you know, that were eventually enjoined in this petition. And Obad Said is one of those, and he's the one that had bought the three parcels and were eventually consolidated into one via the Chancery Court's order. Also, on June sixth of two thousand twenty-four, this order states, or the petition states, that the city of Tupelo, let me back up. It states that the defendants or people that were part of this was the city of Tupelo, Mississippi, who may be served with process by serving a copy of the summons and complaint on the Mayor Honorable Todd Jordan at seventy-one East Troy Street, Tupelo, Mississippi, three eight eight oh four. So, we do know the facts are clear, that as early as in June, on June sixth, two thousand twenty-four, that the mayor was notified of this, at least the beginning of this, and that process. Go forward a little bit further. January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five, the Chancery Court issued an order in response to the petition. And within that, they combined the three lots into one. It's designated as Lot Twenty. And so, so basically, all that did, what the chancellor did in Chancery Court, all he did was saying, was saying, all right, there's nothing that prevents a property owner, in this particular instance, from combining those three lots. It had zero to do with a gas station. It had nothing to do with a gas station. Zero. You can look in the order in this petition. No gas station is listed anywhere in that. So... All right, so you fast forward. So, the order was, it was awarded, the petition was so ordered, January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five. About a little over a month later, February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, the mayor and city council were given an agenda request from Tanner Newman, who's the Director of Department of Development Services. That's the third floor that was mentioned a while ago. And so, the subject of that is, in this email or agenda request to the mayor and the city council, it was, the request was, basically what Tanner was doing, Mr. Newman was doing, was asking this council right here to, and I'm gonna read, this is a direct quote. Mr. Newman at Third Floor was requesting, quote, "Acknowledge the court-ordered amended final plat of the subdivision of Club Site Commercial Subdivision and accept the dedication of the streets, easements, and rights away," end quote. All right, so that agenda was, that was February eighteenth. Okay, that was, that agenda was put before this council right here. All right, on that same date, the city council tabled this agenda. They said, "We're not gonna take this up and put that on the agenda." So, I wonder, I wonder why that was tabled? Well, we'll find out here in just a second. So, on March fourth, two thousand twenty-five, during a regular city council meeting, Agenda Item Number Nineteen, it's on the agenda here, and it's in the matter of the final plat of re-subdivision of Club Site Commercial Subdivision and approval of dedication of the streets, easements, and rights away shown thereon. All right, so that was tabled, but it came up, it came up again on March fourth. And it was...
You have twenty seconds.
Twenty seconds. All right, so what I would like to read here, by the way, I know, I understand that by a majority vote that I could have requests more time. Can I have two more minutes by a majority vote, please?
Okay, all in favor of extending time? Could I have a motion on it?
Some of them.
Second.
Okay, moving properly second, then we will give him additional, what, two minutes?
Yes, ma'am. That'd be good.
Okay, all in favor? Opposers? Two, I mean it. You oppose? Okay. And it's three and three.
Okay, I understand in a tie that the, it's the, that mayor breaks the tie. Is that right?
No, that's only in case of the appointment of a city council.
Okay.
In case of vacancy.
Motion fails.
Okay, well, I'd like to reserve, go back to my...
I'll change my vote. Give me two minutes. I like to hear what he has to say.
Thank you, Mr.... Two minutes. All right, wow. All right, I'm on two seconds right now. All right, so in the zoning, so Mr. Logan, city attorney, said that if we are to go against our code, we will be, we'll be going against the law, basically. Well, I'm reading from the zoning ordinance here. It says, "Zoning protects the rights of property owners and allows them the reasonable use of their property insofar as the use does not negatively affect the health, safety, or welfare of abutting properties or neighborhood." The gas station violates that. It also says, "New residential neighborhoods will be walkable, should be accessible via streets, parks, open spaces, and the development standards should ensure that new development in this district are appropriately scaled to transition between low-density and high-density commercial areas." Here's one thing I really would like for y'all to take and ponder this. It also says, "Standards shall be designed to offer more housing types that are designed to keep neighborhoods and property values stable, to improve walkability and connectivity of residential areas." Property value stable. I don't think that's gonna happen here in this particular issue. So, I would ask that, I've got about another fifty seconds. So, I would ask for the council to go back and reassess this and find, did the city council keep in, or is it in keeping? Is what happened with Business Development Services approving this building permit, is it within keeping of the zoning regulations that requires property values to remain stable?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Well, I have thirty seconds. So, anyway, I think it's pretty clear. I talked to two property owners there, and they said that they were strongly opposed to this as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we will close the public agenda and open up a regular session. Action Agenda One, in the matter of resolution finding and determining that the notice of public hearing on the proposed third amended and restated urban renewal plan of the city of Tupelo, Mississippi, was duly published as required by law, educating insufficient objection at a public hearing on the third amended and restated urban renewal plan, approving and adopting search third amended and restated urban renewal plan and for related purposes. Could I get a motion on this item?
Some of them.
Second, Stephen, I'd like him...
Straighten it out a little bit.
I moved in properly second, that we would approve this item. All in favor? Okay, allow him to talk before we approve.
Yeah, just a few comments, Ms. Nettie. So, this is an amendment to our urban renewal plan, which is the governing document for the, basically the TRA District down here in Fair Park. So, essentially, what this does is it adds an additional seventeen acres of vacant property that the city has purchased down along the, across from Fish Hatchery on Elizabeth Street. It adds that seventeen acres into the urban renewal area in order to bring it under the jurisdiction of the Tupelo Redevelopment Agency and allows it, you know, makes it ripe for private development on that seventeen acres. So, we have sufficiently published the notice of a public hearing, which was conducted last meeting. That public notice was run twice in the Daily Journal, as required by law. There were no objections made at the public hearing. That is recorded in the resolution as well. The Planning Committee took up this matter in accordance with law and made the determination that it complied with the requirements of the city's comprehensive plan. And what is before you tonight is a final resolution that amends the urban renewal plan and adds the seventeen acres to the urban renewal area.
Thank you, Stephen.
And of course, all in favor? Oppose's name? Item four, in the matter of, and it's recommended that it be tabled, but call Tanner Newman up to explain this item, proposal of proposed amended for chapter four of the Development Code.
Madam President, this item is an ordinance to a...
Madam President, this item, uh, is an ordinance to amend chapter four of the Development Code to allow a golf driving range as a use by route in the regional commercial zoning district. Uh, we had one caveat this afternoon, just need to make one more technical edit to that ordinance, uh, so would ask that we table the matter tonight, and we'll take it up at the next meeting once we have that final ordinance.
So, we, you requested that we, requested that we table it, so, uh...
I make a motion, we table item number four.
Second.
Okay, I moved in properly, second, that we would ta, table item four, any discussion? All in favor? Opposers, no. Item five, going to the routine agenda, in the matter of approval of April 1st, 2025 council amendments.
Tell me.
Second.
Moved in properly, second, that we would approve the amendments of April 1st, 2025, any discussion? All in favor? Opposers, no. Item six, in the matter of bill paid, and the bills were paid tonight by Travis Beard, Janet Gaston, Nettie Davis, and Lynn Brown.
I'm going to pay bills.
Second.
Moved in, uh, second, that we would pay the bills, any discussion? All in favor? Opposers, no. Item seven, in the matter of advertising and promotion items. I don't think we have any items for tonight.
So, I would have one.
Yeah, Tim is electric, they're cleaning up.
Okay, that's item, um...
Seven.
Seven.
Kim can explain. Kim.
Can we get Kim to tell us what this item is?
Yes, this is the electrical work that was done for the time for Tupelo. Um, when we gathered, they needed the electrical hookups, and we require an electrician to come in and set that up. Uh, since it was our event, we, we asked that, and I'm not asking to amend the budget for that $245, but I'm asking, uh, to pay that for the event.
Okay, any discussion? Two, it's $245 and 27 cents.
Yes, ma'am.
All in favor?
Kim, this work has already been done, like...
Yes, ma'am, it has been.
Okay. Item, um, eight, in the matter of budget amendment number five for FY 2025, uh, you want to...
Some move.
Second.
Move in properly, second, that we would, uh, uh, approve the amendment, but we'll wait until after Kim is presented, and then we'll vote on it.
Um, thank you, as I went through it yesterday, I'll be brief today. Uh, we're not asking to increase the general fund, but we are asking upon the police department's request to transfer $10,000 from their capital fund to the capital fund. They would like to use the $10,000 that they had, uh, for K9 to, um, to be, uh, used on the target system. It came in $10,000 above the original amount that we, we thought it would be, and we're asking to move that to purchase that, um, that target system. Um, that's the only item in the general fund, and that's just a, um, transfer out, uh, but we are asking to, uh, increase the capital infrastructure fund $110,000. Um, the first item is the, uh, $600,000 worth of breathing apparatus for the, uh, fire department. We did have this in the budget, but I need to change the source of revenue for that. We anticipate getting a grant for that. The grant was not awarded, but we, um, the current system that they have is, um, no longer, um, supported, and we do need to, uh, go ahead and purchase that. We have about a month to go, so we would like to get this on order. That is, um, not increasing the budget, but it is using different revenue sources. Um, we're also asking to, um, transfer that $10,000. This is the fund that will actually go into this, um, police department equipment. The $10,000, uh, will offset the extra cost of the target system. And the only other item that we have is, um, $100,000 for, uh, that we would like to add to the depot, um, that will finish up the paving, um, for the depot, um, which is not a lot for a, uh, project this size, and, um, we should be through with it, um, May the, I think the ribbon cutting is May the 2nd. Also, too, we've got $230,000 that is set up in a capital for drainage project. Um, Public Works would like to have this transferred to the, um, maintenance account and use these funds for point repair, uh, due to a lot of the water and, uh, damages that we received. This will all be done in-house, and he would like to get started on those repairs.
Any discussion? I would just like for us to, uh, notice the beautiful depot on Front Street, which is, uh, just about completed, and they will have the opening on the, uh, May the 2nd. So, if you can, uh, come by, and as we have the, uh, uh, sw, the, uh, opening of that beautiful facility, that we will be able to utilize in the community. All in favor? Opposers, no.
Thank you.
Item, um, nine, in the matter of ratifying development and reimbursement agreement between the City of Tupelo, Lee County, Mississippi, and Target in co-op, cooperation.
Move to take it off the table.
Second.
Second.
Move that, and second, that we take it off the table, all in favor?
Move to approve this item.
Second.
Move in properly, second, that we would move this item, that we moved off the table, all in favor? Item 10, in the matter of review and approve properties for debalish.
Some move.
Second.
Move then second, that we would approve, uh, properties for debalish, any discussion? All in favor? Opposers, no. Item 11, in the matter of lot mowing.
Move the, second.
Move then second, that we would approve items for lot mowing, any discussion? All in favor? Opposers, no. Item 12, in the matter of review and approve minutes for the planning committee meeting.
Second.
Move then second, that we would approve planning committee meet, uh, meet, and meeting. All in, all in favor? Opposers, no. Item 13, in the matter of surplus for trade, one motorcycle.
Tell me.
Second.
Okay, is, uh, is in a discussion, uh, would you like to come forward, uh, uh, chief, and discuss the, uh, motorcycle item?
Yes, I'm requesting the city council to surplus a 2012 Harley-Davidson motorcycle. It's reached its end of life. We plan to use this motorcycle for trade and the purchase of a new motorcycle in the very near future.
Okay, any questions? All in favor? Opposers, no, thank you. In the matter of approved, add and seize vehicle, you can stay up here, chief, I believe you made it, to discuss the, item 14, in the matter of approving, uh, add and seize, uh, vehicles to M and N U asset list.
Tell me.
Second.
Move in properly, second, that we would approve this item, and, you know, you're going to discuss it at this time.
If you want me to, I will. The North Mississippi Narcotics Unit properly and legally seized a 2014 Grand Jeep Cherokee. We would like to add this to our asset list and utilize this vehicle.
Any questions? All in favor? Opposers, no. Item 15, in the matter of surplus for items from inventory.
Move, we approve, uh, surplusing items.
Second.
Move then second, that we would approve surplus items for inventory, any discussion? All in favor? Opposers, no. Item 16, in the matter bid award approval for removal and existing boom and installation of new boom for Nuckaboom truck, that's from the Public Works Department. Uh, uh, would you like to come and discuss this, um, please?
Now, move, we approve this item.
Second.
Move in properly, second, they approve this item, item after discussion.
Yes, ma'am, we are requesting approval from the council on this. This is a boom replacement for one of our sanitation trucks. The boom itself had reached its end of life. The truck's still in, it still has plenty of life left in it. This was a reverse auction that we had one, one unpriced proposal submitted, so it's a sole source bidder of Ren Body Works. We just request council to approve the boom.
Any question? Madam, many, uh, boom trucks that we have that are still running now?
We run, we have five in service. This was kind of a backup truck. Uh, we made a couple of repairs on some. I think we've got six in utilization as of today.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
All in favor? Opposers, no. Item 17, in the matter of change order, uh, two final close, uh, closeout approval for West Bristow Street, uh, improvement, bid number 2024-005P.
Some move.
Second.
Move then second, that we would approve, uh, this order, uh, any discussion? I'd just like to say that we had to see this getting done because that street was really having a lot of problems, so thank you so much for that work that you've done.
Yes, ma'am.
All in favor? Opposers, no. Eighteen, in the matter of Tupelo Sports Council, donate funds to the City of Tupelo for stationary bike.
Move, we approve.
Second.
Move that, uh, se, move then second, that we would approve this donation, any discussion? All in favor? Opposers, no. Item 19, in the matter of approval of the traffic committee minutes of April the 3rd, 2025.
Some move.
Second.
Move then properly, second, that we would tr, approve the traffic, uh, minutes, uh, for April the 3rd, any discussion? All in favor? Opposers, no. Item 20, in the matter of convention and business bureau board minutes for April the 1st, 2025.
Move, we approve.
Second.
Uh, move, approved then second, that we would approve the minutes of April the 1st, any discussion? All in favor? Opposers, no. Item 21, in the matter of review of declaration of state of local emergency concern in March 2025, severe weather.
Tell me.
Second.
Move then second, that we would approve this declaration, any discussion? All in favor? Opposers, no. Item 22, in the matter of donated leave requests for Sheila Logan.
Some move.
Second.
Move then second, that we would approve, uh, this donation, uh, any discussion? All in favor? Opposers, no. Item 23, in the matter of one-year extension of side of ways collection and disposal contract with Waste Management of Mississippi.
Some move.
Second.
Move then second, that we would approve this one-year ex, uh, extension of side of ways, uh, collection, any discussion?
So, so much spoken, so, basically, we signed a contract with Waste Management, what, four, five years ago, four years ago?
Six.
Six years ago, and, and in the contract, it was written, uh, by state statute, or conforming to state statute, we could offer a one-year extension, correct, or do one-year extension?
You can offer a one-year extension for up to four, four years, so it's a, could be a 10-year contract, but we have to come back every year after this year to do that.
Any other questions? All in favor? Opposers, no. Item 24, in the matter of real estate purchase contract part of, uh, Lot 6, Akia Gardens, uh, subdivision on Joy Street from Martin Hernandez Moreno and Maria Montanes, uh, Mar, Morales.
Some move.
Second.
Move then second, that we would approve this, uh, contract. We have another item 25.
Got a vote on this one?
You get a vote on that one.
We got a vote on it?
You got the motion.
All in favor? I just need a vote on, uh, item, uh, 24.
Uh, thank you.
Okay.
All in fa...
Uh, all in favor? Opposers, no. Okay. Uh, we would now go to, to, uh, to, uh, number 25, in the matter of a change order number one from Veterans Park, uh, two playground for bid number 2024-060PR.
Tell me.
Second.
Move in properly, second, that we would, uh, approve this change order, any discussion? I'm just happy to see us get the, this playground equipment done, uh, over at Veterans Park, and, uh, uh, I know it's been a request, but we, will be taking, that will be taking place soon. So, any other discussion? All in favor? Opposers, no. We go to study agenda, and we don't have any, uh, items for, uh, stu, for the study agenda. At this time, we go to executive session. Do we have any items for, uh, executive session?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, President Davis, we have a matter of, uh, economic development, which is a proper, uh, economic development project, which is a, a proper, uh, matter for executive session.
Could I get a motion, uh, on the executive session?
I make a motion that we go to executive session.
Second.
Move then second, that we would go into executive session. Uh, any of the, the people that you would like to specify to stay here, all in favor? Uh, uh, to stay for the executive session.
Yes, uh, Patrick McRaney, he is with the development group, and, uh, and Shane Holman, who is, uh, here with CDF, and also, uh, I guess they can both kind of chime in. We tried to get, uh, Shane Spies here, uh, from the hospital, but he was, uh, out of town. Uh, so, those two for sure, Don, the mayor, Steven, Tanner, Kim, and Rosalyn, if she is here.
Okay.
Scott.
Okay, thank you for coming, and, uh, we welcome you to come back to our next council meeting. Thank you.
Let's see, tell you one, pass it down. Six, seven, yes.